City Council, I'm Heather Shand, the Ward Three City Councilor and Chair of the Committee. And to my right is Councilor McCauley from Ward Five. Our compatriot Christine Wallace could not be here tonight, so Jim and I make up the quorum. We also have our Planning Board. So I'm opening up our meeting, and I'll let the Planning Board open up their meeting.
Bonnie Sontag, Chair of the Planning Board. We have five of our members here tonight, and our meeting is officially opened.
So since this is a committee of the whole, I'd like to recognize that we have Charlie Tontar from At Large, Bruce Vogel, another At Large Councilor, Councilor Aigerman President, and Barry Connell, another At Large Councilor here, and Councilor Zee sitting in the corner, quarantining himself.
Social disinformation.
So I would like to say if anybody here does not feel well, please don't feel like you need to stay. We are not going to -- this public hearing is going to remain open until April 15th. There will be ample opportunity for additional public comments to be made. In addition to the April 15th meeting, joint meeting, we will also have another Planning and Development Committee meeting on April the 2nd, so there will be ample amount of time for folks to have more public comment. So keep that in mind. So mark your calendars, April 2nd, 6 o'clock in the City Council chambers, and then April 15th, we'll once again have another joint meeting. That was an agreement that the Planning Board Chair Bonnie and I came to agreement with earlier, that April 15th, we have an additional meeting, joint meeting, so we'll continue it to then. I did get a request for my recording that I tried to make last week at our Planning and Development Committee meeting. I have to admit, I am not tech savvy, and I only recorded the first hour, so I have those minutes, but it's not the full meeting, it went to an hour and a half, so those minutes I'm going to transcribe, and those meeting minutes will be part of our next Planning and Development meeting that we'll approve on March 19th, and then those will get posted to the city website. So tonight, we are here to discuss the zoning part of the short-term rental units ordinance. It is ordinance 46. So I'm going to let Andy Port walk us through that one. And just to give folks a lay of the land, what we typically do for these meetings for public comment, we have folks come to the mic. You have two minutes to speak. We try to keep it on a timer so that folks get a chance to have their say. And then afterwards, we'll close the public comment section, and they're going to let the Planning Board give us their input on what they've heard, and I'm pretty sure they've had a few messages and correspondence amongst themselves that they want to review. I know Rick Taner has an email that he sent out to us that they're going to go through as well. And then afterwards, we're going to probably wrap it up after that to keep this short, since I don't think everyone wants to be hanging out in public events these days. So with that, I'm going to let Planning Director Port go through the ordinance.
Thank you, Heather. So my name is Andy Port, I'm the Director of Planning and Development. I'm just going to summarize the proposed ordinance for everybody. Obviously, the sponsors may want to speak to the purposes of the ordinance and its intent. There is also a related amendment that's being discussed by the City Council's Planning and Development Committee and the License and Permits Committee. That is where most of the substance of the regulations proposed for short-term rental units is located. The current amendment that we're discussing this evening, and I realize there's an interplay between these two amendments that might need, for some sort of discussion, and I think some of the comments we've received have pointed that out. But primarily, tonight's discussion is to discuss the zoning amendment itself, which in essence dictates where in the city so-called short-term rentals would be allowed. So there's a definition of short-term rentals called out in this proposal. This is, what I'm showing on the screen right here is just an excerpt from our zoning table. This line would be added to our zoning table to indicate for short-term rental units, which districts, this is the use number, 111, but which districts, these are zoning districts in the city, the uses would be allowed. P indicates permitted as of right, so this is our Conservation Agricultural District, that's special permit, SP. P means permitted as of right, that means there's no special permit needed for the use. That does not mean that a license would not be required, and I say that because the other amendment, which dictates the requirements for a license, would dictate more particular requirements for the use. But in the residential districts, R1, R2, R3, the B2, B3, and then the waterfront marine mixed use, those are listed right now, at least in the initial proposal, as proposed permitted districts. In the waterfront marine dependent, WMD, and in the Conservation District, it's proposed, at least initially, that those would be for special permits as well. So the reason I point that out is because in the Conservation District and the waterfront marine dependent district, where they're not shown as permitted as of right, in those instances, the applicants doing short-term rentals would be required, the way it's currently proposed with both ordinances, would be required to get both a license and a special permit. But again, this ordinance, as is proposed right now, proposes to regulate the use just by which districts it goes in, and this is on the website as well, for everybody who's interested, we can make sure you all have that, but it's available on the city's website. While the discussion proceeds, I'm going to pull up the zoning map just so folks can reference or see where those are, if anybody's not familiar with it. But in essence, this proposal is really just to dictate where short-term rental units, which is a new use category that has not, until recent time, been regulated at local levels. You're seeing a lot of nationwide conversations about short-term rental units, local regulations obviously being discussed, and statewide regulation of short-term rental units, including revenues, which is another aspect of the regulation. But right now, this is about where in the city should short-term rental units be allowed.
Thank you, Andy. Just wanted to recognize that Councilor Khan has also shown up, so we have seven of us here tonight. So with that being said, why don't we start with the public comment? Folks can come up to the mic, get in line, give me your name, give us your address, and then you have two minutes to speak. Yes. Please walk up to the mic, please.
Yeah, good evening. My name's Al Clifford, 45 Green Street in Newburyport, and I am not in favor of this zoning amendment. The purpose of the Newburyport zoning ordinance, as quoted in the zoning ordinance, the preamble to it, "to promote safety, general welfare of residents, and to conserve property value with consideration for the character of the zones and the suitability for particular uses." That's a basic tenet of zoning. You separate uses. The use we're talking about here is a business use. No qualms about it. You can't argue any other way. It is a business. Businesses do not belong in residential areas. Businesses are allowed. This use is allowed, right now, in our zoning book, in the business district. Anybody can run a transient guest facility, just buy a property in the business district, and adhere to the business district zoning by law, and you got one. So it is allowed. To say we don't have one is not correct. Now, the problems with a transient guest business is myriad. The coming and going at night, the disruption of the neighborhood, and this is key, the neighborhoods are the ones affected by this zoning amendment. The neighborhood, to maintain the tranquility and the quiet that people deserve in their neighborhood, is paramount to any consideration of a zoning amendment like this. There is no control in that regard. Your next-door neighbor can have a facility that can rent to total strangers who run a credit card on the computer. You don't know them, you've never met them. They come in, they stay at night, they come in at all hours, potentially. I'm not saying this always happens, but there's no curb on whether it does or doesn't. The plane's late at Logan, the traffic's heavy on 495, disruption.
Thank you, Mr. Clifford.
Two minutes. Okay.
So my name's David Moore, and for 37 years, we've lived at 182 Water Street, in a three-family house. I was unaware of the fact that Mr. Clifford actually lived in Newburyport. I thought he was a resident of Rowley. But be that as it may, he has numerous, numerous rooms that are rented out in, I think, three guest facilities, and they, I assume, don't have a curfew, and they can come and go as they wish. But be that as it may, during tourist season for the last three years, we have chosen to rent our three-family owner-occupied house, a portion thereof, occasionally to overnight guests, through Airbnb. I don't think the neighbors even know that we do it. Some of them do, because we're so close down there, but I can guarantee you that there has been no disturbance. We have plenty of parking and all that business, and fire extinguishers, and egress, and just like it would be if it were a full-time rental. So the big deal with me is, I don't think we should be required, and this is really the only objection I have, I don't think we should be required to let everybody within a 300-foot radius, if I understand this correctly, to know that we're doing this. No more so than if a grandfathered six-unit apartment house in that same zoning, which is R2, has to do that. Because if there's a disturbance, the neighbors can always call the police, and I don't see why full-time units aren't required to do that. So I resent the fact that in the ordinance, we are supposed to do it. And that's it, and I thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mike Morales. I am the President of the Greater Newburyport Realtors Association, and I just wanted to read a brief statement on behalf of our association regarding this ordinance.
Which city do you live?
I live in Haverhill. I'm a resident of Haverhill. On behalf of more than 450 licensed members and professionals of the Greater Newburyport Association of Realtors, we share our comments on Proposed Article 10, License Required for Short-Term Rental Units. GNR supports the ability of municipalities to create local bylaws regulating short-term rentals, and recognizes this authority is explicitly granted by Section 14, Chapter 337 of the Acts of 2018. We believe it is important to give local authorities the ability to enact bylaws that assure the protection of residents, provide essential health and safety services, and raise revenue to be self-sufficient in providing these services. However, we have significant concerns about the breadth of many of the provisions in Proposed Article 10 because of the potential unintended consequences on real estate in Newburyport. We believe if the new section is enacted as currently drafted, it will significantly infringe on the private property rights, negatively affect the real estate market, all but shut down the small existing short-term rental market in downtown Newburyport, and potentially not even be the best solution to solve the issue that the city is focused on. Short-term rentals provide a valuable alternative to traditional lodging for visitors, and uniquely empower residents to monetize their properties. We see no utility in shutting down this source of income for residents and a source of revenue for the state and municipalities per the new short-term rental law. We also note that based on searches of popular hosting platforms such as Airbnb, Booking.com, the entire municipality currently just has over 200 short-term rentals listed, most of which are in Plum Island. The vast majority of downtown Newburyport's short-term rentals are self-managed. These are primary and secondary homes in which the homeowner's goal is to earn enough money to pay for their mortgage or monthly expenses. Very few are investor-owned. Wow, two minutes. Thank you.
Morales, you obviously have something there. Anyone that wants to email us this, we can certainly take your comments, in addition to what we just wrote down, but what you have typed up there, and we can put them into the public records.
We'll do.
Please email us.
Thank you.
Tom Calderjohn, 64 Federal Street, Co-President of the Newburyport Preservation Trust. I've spoken on this issue before, and I would like to repeat my main key point. Short-term rentals in historic neighborhoods, we think, are destabilizing. They don't help a historic neighborhood. In a neighborhood, you want cohesiveness, you don't want people coming and going. There is a place for short-term rentals, but we don't believe it's in the historic neighborhoods, which is a large part of Newburyport. I would like to make one other point, and that is, I think this whole process, and the ordinance is quite large, I think one thing that might help, if you're able to break it into parts, maybe pull out Plum Island. Plum Island has a history of rentals, of varying types, winter rentals, summer rentals, and so forth. You might consider that, I don't pretend to speak for Plum Island, but you might consider pulling that out and treating that in a different manner. Thank you.
Just a comment on that.
Can you speak into the mic?
Just a comment on that, in terms of Plum Island. I know in the draft, we probably didn't get the language correct, but our intent is to exempt Plum Island from the primary resident requirement along the way, given the nature and history and environment that exists down in Plum Island. So admittedly, for those who want to be critical of the actual ordinance that you're looking at today, we know it's a draft, we know that there's changes that should be made, and we're going through the public hearing process to garner all those information so we can continue this at another day. But I just wanted to, that's kind of a glaring thing that probably 10 or 12 people over the last five days have noted on, and I just wanted to make a note of that. Okay? Thank you.
All right.
Definitely not that tall. My name is Sonya Schoungert, 47 Purchase Street. My wife and I own both long-term rentals and a home here, and our intention was always to use part of our home as an Airbnb, which is our home, and also our primary means of travel when we leave Newburyport. So I just kind of want to share a little bit about that, because there is a screening process that goes on, there's a review process that goes on, there's a lot of processes that go on. And as an owner who's looking to rent short-term, I find it absolutely obnoxious that I pay the same taxes that they pay in Plum Island, but it would be under a different consideration. When I have had long-term renters who have lived in my neighborhood who have done exactly what you said earlier, that aren't short-term renters. And I've had short-term renters in my area that have come in quiet as a mouse and left quiet as a mouse, because people are people, and we're going to have them, and that's why we have other systems in place, like the Newburyport Police Department, to manage ruckuses, or whatever they have to manage if someone's uncomfortable with someone else's behavior in their proximity. But, and there's a lot of other things that could be considered, a cap on how many bedrooms you have, so you don't have a bachelor party all in one house. There's a lot of things that you can consider, but to ask us to regulate differently the way that our long-term rentals are used and the way that our short-term rentals are used, to pay different fees, to have different expectations, to have different zoning areas, it feels convoluted and it feels shortsighted. Because the other thing that happens every time I walk into an Airbnb, I get a, or a good Airbnb at least, I get a gift certificate to a local business. It promotes me becoming part of the community. I go in, I learn about the community, I learn about the people. There's a lot of ways that this can be an economically beneficial situation for the city, for the community, and for the neighborhoods. So that was, thank you.
Can you spell your last name, please?
That's, it takes like a half an hour. Can I come up after?
Half an hour, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sean Buck Tiari. I am a Realtor here in Newburyport, licensed in both Massachusetts and New Hampshire. I live on Plum Island at 8 Barker Street with my wife, two dogs, and soon-to-be twins, and I'm part of the Greater Newburyport Association of Realtors, who put together the comments that Mike Morales just shared with everyone, and which we're happy to send to whomever wants to see it. I would like to echo a few things that you had just mentioned. In addition to being a licensed Realtor, I also own and manage a short-term rental management company called Secos Vacation Rentals. I help homeowners with their short-term rentals in Hampton Beach, Salisbury Beach, Plum Island, and downtown Newburyport. I own a few short-term rentals myself, none of which are in downtown Newburyport, because downtown Newburyport financially doesn't make sense from an investment standpoint, so I look elsewhere. But to echo a few points that you made, as you may imagine, I am in favor of short-term rentals. I think it's mutually beneficial for towns, for residents, and for guests who want to enjoy the beauty that the town provides. Without short-term rentals, we have some accommodation options that are great. Most of them are bed and breakfasts, or small boutique hotels that offer one bed or two bedrooms max, but for large groups and for families who want to come to town to celebrate a baby shower or to celebrate a son-in-law's wedding, these accommodations provide such a great experience for these people to enjoy their families, to enjoy their town, and they're much more economically affordable for these large groups, as opposed to these large groups renting multiple one-bedroom hotel rooms, bed and breakfast rooms. So it's economically beneficial for the guests, it's economically beneficial for the owners of the home, and it's economically beneficial for the town in which is benefiting from the money that's being spent on catering and on restaurants and at the shops, et cetera. I assume my two minutes is up. I'll probably be up a couple more times, because I have a lot to say, but just those, I want to be a resource for the town and for the citizens, as someone who really sees themselves as an expert in the short-term rental area. I feel like I can provide a lot of good information so we can all accomplish a goal that can be beneficial for everyone here.
Hi. Jane Snow, 9 Coffin Street. I am a data person, some of you who know me know that, and so I went online and tried to find as many of the short-term rentals as I could. I came up with 185. The real estate people said 200, so I must be pretty close. And what I found out of that is 98 of these are complete houses that are rented, townhouses, 11 apartments, 26 condos, five suites/loft, because there were only a few of those, 11, and rooms, 29. So 156 of these 185 are, you're renting the entire house. And the, most of the ads say that it's a lockbox, or that they say that the owner is not there. I am not against a short-term rental. I am in a residential area. I live in a residential area. One of my neighbors turned their home into a short-term rental. I had no idea. I ended up having people parked all over my property, I said this the other night. I reached out to the police for help. Nope. I ended up, you know, finding out later on that it had been rented to a stag party, and so I think you have to, I'm hoping that by this dialogue, we're going to come up with a plan that is good for the short-term rental people, but protects neighborhoods and people who bought their home in a residential area and they don't expect to have a business next door, because it is in fact a business. So I appreciate very much that you're taking the time to do this, and I hope through all of the input that we can come up with something that works to protect everybody. But I do feel very strongly that it should not be in a residential area.
Susan Martenson. I live at 151 Merrimack Street in Newburyport, and I own a property at 54 Washington Street, where I own the property and rent it out as short-term rental through Airbnb. And I've also, sorry? 151 Merrimack Street? And I've also run an Airbnb in the Virgin Islands for a couple of years, which I just sold in January, but I'm experienced running short-term rentals. And I do see this as a growing market and serving a need, and that Newburyport will really miss out if we start to put restrictions on short-term rentals and Airbnb, and people will seek communities elsewhere, especially looking in the summertime. So I think seaside town, it's a tourist town, and people are looking to stay in homestays. That's how I travel worldwide, and that's what people are looking for travel. I think it is a business, but so are long-term rentals. I mean, it's an exchange of money to a non-owner of the property, I mean, to the owner of the property, to the person who lives there, does not own the property, whether it's a six-month lease, whether it's a six-day lease, I mean, the person's still getting the money. In terms of the behavior of the people, I mean, that is, there is a vetting process. You do not rent it out to parties, you don't rent it out to, I mean, there are rules even through Airbnb, in terms of getting your license and for regulations. I guess that's my comments. I mean, also, this property that I bought, what had been run like this for years, that's the reason that I bought it. I live next door to a short-term rental that had been run for years, the owners live in Colorado. I live also next door on Merrimack Street to a multi-unit apartment building that's run by a large company in town. I mean, this community, I think it's a myth, that's a small residential suburban quiet town. That's not what Newburyport is, and I think we're serving, we're providing a service.
Stephanie Nikic, 93 High Street. I have submitted to the City Council written comment, which I don't want to repeat here, but what I'm troubled, we're just looking at the zoning here. The zoning part of this concurrent proposed amendments, is it completely inadequate, I believe? And for the proponents of short-term rentals, I assure you, it's all good. I think that most people who live full-time in Newburyport have no idea how extensively this will invite and allow short-term rentals with few restrictions and no enforcement into our neighborhoods. I think it's very troubling. I think we're people who have come into neighborhoods to serve this market. We actually have a high demand in Newburyport for people who live and work here. I'm not interested in being man-targeted. I'm not interested, I've lived here for 40 years. This is a community of residents, and we do have, as I completely support Al Clifford's discussion about how zoning separates uses in the business districts for businesses, and then we have residential districts for residences, and it is a difference. It is a difference. If you live somewhere for six months, or you fly in for five days, it's a difference in a residential district. And I would like to protect the residential districts of Newburyport for people who live here, and for those, you know, there's nothing here which says if you own an investment property in a residential district, you can't rent it. You can.
Thank you, Stephanie. All right. Okay. Thank you.
I spoke before, and I have pretty much the same comments. I'm not in favor of allowing short-term rentals in the district, from the downtown, South End, where we live at. But I kind of have my own experiences in that I lived in a condo in the district, in the South End. And when I first moved in, there were three owner-occupied units, and after 10 years of living, there was the only one there. It was the only one that was best in, it was clean, it was raw, and everybody underneath me now was renting out to her meeting. So I had strangers all the way just milling around the building, not knowing how they were getting in. They put those locks on, that's key-coded, and they didn't know what the key code was. They'd be knocking on my door, they'd be parking in front of my curb pad. The South End is very densely residential, not The south end is very densely residential, not necessarily in there. And for condominiums and even with the neighbor that was right next to me, they had lots of common areas. And neighborhoods live together, and we know who's in the common areas, and we say hello. I think if, Newburyport is just so big, and if you're going to allow this business, that these real estate people are done, oh, and they can sell this really easy, but if everybody would like that, which helped to, in Newburyport. Who wouldn't? I would. But I will live here, and that's why I moved here, and that's why I chose my condominium in the store neighborhood. I don't want to be bothered with these transient people that come through, have it outside of the store district. That's okay, I'm honored, fine, a wonderful place to be. You know, I just can't say enough about what the wonderful quality of life of Newburyport is. If you allow this business to come in, it's going to overrun it, and for one, the residents are going to move away. So, how subject to decide, how do you want to market Newburyport? Come here, have fun, be transient, spend lots of money? Or do you want to say families, quality of life? We protect our residents, we give them a quality of life that can't be actually placed out, or do you want to mine, ruin it and have it just like any other place in the United States? And that would be a shame to lose the uniqueity of Newburyport to business, such as short-term rentals and all this story.
My name is Pam Jones. My husband and I live at 49 Pond Street. We own the house we're trying to get rid of. I have experience with rental property, long-term rentals since the early 80s. In 2005, we bought a place on Plum Island, do short-term rentals. We own a house on Oakland Street, Victorian house. And when our daughters went off to college, because I had experienced renting short-term, I said, gee, I wonder if anyone would want to come to our house for a week. That was, in the summer, that was 10 years ago. And in that time, I have done short-term rentals back in the day when it was Craigslist, which was, you know, kind of a nightmare. The, you know, the Airbnb and the RBO is so much better than that as far as, you know, who you're going to get. But also in that time, I've done a long-term rental in that same house. So I've experienced renting the same house. It's a four-bedroom Victorian on Oakland Street, in a neighborhood. We lived there, so I know most of the neighbors as well. So I've done short-term rental there. And then I said, okay, I'm going to try the long-term rental. I did a school year. It was the worst thing ever. You know, long-term rentals, if you have a problem, it's a long-term problem, right? One thing nice about a short-term is, it is an issue, they're gone very quickly. I talk to my neighbors all the time about this. I do have a neighbor who moved in after we started this, who was not that pleased with it, her biggest complaint was the basketball playing, so I gave the basketball net to a different neighbor, you know, trying to take care of this. We have some neighbors that moved in next door after, young couple, and I'd be like, oh, you know, how is it? You know, I'm always checking with them, and they say, oh, it's great. Like, they, they like the idea that different people are coming. You know, the comments that I'm hearing about, you know, don't, don't change anything in something, are we going to put a wall up? You know, the diversity of people that have come here is amazing. When I first started doing this, I used to, you know, run in and do the cleaning myself and run out the door and not meet anyone. And then I realized that, no, that, you know, I go and meet the people all the time, and just on personal level, it's nice to meet them.
Thank you.
Oh, I want to keep going.
Absolutely. But like I will say, everyone else, if you have a long statement, please put it into an email and send it to us. And we also, on April 2nd, continue your, your conversation.
Sorry?
On April the 2nd, you have another meeting.
April 2nd?
And on April 15th as well.
I'm sorry.
April 7th? Yes. Sorry. On April the 2nd, we have another Planning and Development Committee meeting at 6 o'clock, that we will continue this discussion, where we can have public comments, and we will also have continued public hearing. This public hearing will remain open until April 15th, and we'll have again public comments there.
Thank you. My name's Joanne. I'm in Zeta 26 Juggerson Street. It's a house that had, was built as two condos. I own both. I live in one, and I rent out the other. I'm, I live three houses away from Charlie Tantor, and until I told him I was a short-term host, he had no idea that I was doing short-term rentals. I've lived here for 30, 34 years. I'm a single woman, I'm a single female homeowner, and yes, I'm a real estate investor. I bought a piece of property that I wanted to maximize my investment. Shame on me. So I look at this proposal and all the zones and streets, and I really feel you're putting a noose around my neck in how I can maximize my investment, my retirement. I take exception to Al Clifford's statements, which are completely untrue. I vet every single person. I, I can get their details, I can say no, I say no parties. Airbnb has a process where if there's a noise issue or an issue, you can text or email the owner or the property manager of the house. My neighbor across the street is a long-term renter, dog barks all day long, I call the city, there's no noise ordinance. So I feel that the city of Newburyport is really super short-sighted. I travel internationally, I only stay at short-term rentals hotels only if I have to, because they provide a service. People in my short-term rental now are relocating to Newburyport. They're staying at my place until they find a place they would like to live in Newburyport. So I think it's not just tourists. People come here because they're taking care of elderly parents, they're here to visit their family reunions, so it's not just tourism. Thank you.
Is there someone here that hasn't spoken? I think there are you. Hello?
Leah Tamari, I live 36 Lake Street, home in To Mass, and I am a short-term rental manager in Newburyport, and I want to echo that, of course, I'm a manager of short-term rentals, I'm fairly in favor of it. I think there's a couple key points here that are raised that are important to consider and blend into the business. The first is the whole nuisance idea. You know, over, with over 2,000, okay, if I only had to escort two sets of guests out of the properties. So the amount of nuisance is really a low level of the total participation in short-term rentals. So you can hear that managers who actually manage the problem out of the situation is a good part of this. So as we look at an ordinance, it's probably worth considering saying way again and making sure we manage it as a systematic, because there are a lot of that. I think the most important thing that we're trying to highlight here, the people who are tourists, is just how much the fabric of Newburyport is dependent on short-term rentals. If you think about how much money is spent by visitors in Newburyport, if you don't move places for visitors to stay, they won't come. And that beautiful charming downtown in Suffolk, merchants won't be able to see a business. So it's, I know that people like, they, well, a resident will spend just as much. But in fact, think about yourself. How often, when you go on vacation, how much do you spend a day on your vacation versus at home? And how do you spend that money? You go to restaurants, you go to shops, you buy things. Everything's all going to be a bunch of guests. You're on your vacation for a few days, you buy 20 guests. You're at home, you buy a gift, maybe 100 a month. So, you know, just think about that kind of concentration. So when you have, I'm not short-term rentals within a community, your community is actually elevated because of it. So please do consider that. I have, I've put together some information on a lot, short-term rentals are good for Newburyport with some data, and I'm happy to share that.
Amy Bowser, and I'm at 21 Olive Street, and I echo an enormous amount of what's been said here. I too have lived here for almost 40 years. I too live in a residential area. I too travel a lot and stay in Airbnbs, and I too have a space that is rented as Airbnb through HomeAway. The term HomeAway is apt, and they were very clever when they did that, because in fact, you kind of get a feel for being in an area when you don't live there. And one of our best experiences was going to Amsterdam, living and being in this gorgeous townhouse, Manhattan Front House. Now, if that's not historic, I don't know what is. We, everything was beautiful, it was elegant, and we were blessed to live there. I mean, we, we just were happy to give over our money for that experience. I encourage you to go on my webpage, or my HomeAway page, it's there, it's for rent. My friends will say I'm a rating score, because the truth is, they are all five stars, and it's not because of me, it's because of Newburyport. I can't wait until Newburyport taxes this income of mine. I'm happy, I signed up for Massachusetts tax. Why not? It is the wave of hospitality. So Newburyport, I believe, would be short-sighted to limit it in the waves that, I, I haven't actually looked at this proposal, I'm just making my comments in favor of it. But mostly, I would say, let's measure the number of problems we've had versus the thousands of nights of guests we have had in the city that are staying in homes like mine. I don't have a kitchen. So when they come to Newburyport, they spend every penny of their time in Newburyport. Those are dollars that we need in our city, and I believe we can regulate it in a way that is beneficial to everyone. And, so that's all for the public section. Thank you very much.
There will be more opportunities, Amy. Anyone else? Wait once. All right, we can certainly close out the public comment this session.
Can I defer my time to her?
Yes.
I wanted to tell you who my, my last renter was at my home on Oakland Street. It was a resident who was redoing their house, and they were, they were absolutely beside themselves that they found my house to stay in, that they could come with their three kids and their dog, and their kids could still go to the Newburyport school system. So that's another, and this is the house that you want to get rid of.
Thank you. All right, so we'll close the public comment section, and we'll turn this over to the planning board.
Okay, as planning board members, I'd like you to comment on the ordinance before us on zoning. Anything that you'd like to say about the districts and permitting and not permitting in those districts? And if you'd like to comment on anything else, I'll, we'll be back. But that's our primary reason for going forward. And just to reiterate what Heather said, we will be discussing various drafts that come through after all of these, these two public hearings are closed, and we'll be discussing them in our March 18th meeting and our April 1st meeting. So this won't be your only time to review some of this that you've seen only for the first time tonight, and then we'll be back here with the joint public hearing, but this meeting will be continued to on April 15th. And I guess, I don't need to summarize anything that's in front of us, because we'll be talking about that. I guess the one thing I did want to say is that there's been some concern that, and it's also been in the public domain over the other discussion the previous week on licensing, that there may be pieces of the more complex city ordinance that will be either pulled out and put into the zoning or reiterated into the zoning. That's not something that most people worry about, but in terms of tightening up the zoning ordinance that we heard some comments about tonight, we have every intention of doing that. So if there's personal comments or planning-related comments, I'll hold them until we have time to look at all the information that's before us for the informal discussion we'll have at our planning board meeting on March, whatever I said it was, 18th. So, so before we close our portion of the meeting, I need a motion to continue this joint public hearing to April 15th. Leah, move second. Beth, all those in favor? So we'll be back here on April 15th in the same form.
Would any of the councillors who are here tonight like to speak that are part of the community of the whole?
I wasn't going to speak, but I was actually on the opposite side of this table just this morning in Boston, at the Boston Zoning Commission, arguing for a zoning change. And I'm inspired by the chairman there, Jay Early, to remind everyone that all-or-nothing thinking really is, it's not particularly helpful. The idea that, you know, we have the mindset on the city council that we're going to ban everything 100% or allow it without any regulation is just not reasonable. And at the time, this morning, there were neighbors telling the zoning commission that even a four-year-old could make a better decision than them, and so on, and that didn't go over well with the commission. So I guess what I want to remind people of is, when you're talking about legislation, which is what zoning is, we're trying to balance, we're trying to balance various interests. And particular stakeholders may have a view that they're 100% right, but very rarely have I seen that on the council where it goes down that way. So I want to validate the interest of the city in tourism. That is a decision that we made essentially in the mid-'70s, and it's too late to turn back now. But it's not just a tourist town. There are other interests, including community building. And the fact is, it may seem to the chamber or to realtors that 200 short-term rental units are not a lot, for a little place like Newburyport, that is a lot. And the whole purpose of having zoning is to anticipate conflict and minimize them. It should not be necessary for everybody to go running to the police for every dispute. The idea is if you have single-family zoning or hotel zoning or manufacturing zoning, which we've had here almost 100 years now, since the early '20s, you know, that's how we keep the peace. The question is where you draw the lines, and that's why I'm saying all-or-nothing thinking is not going to help. We are going to, I believe, have to select areas where short-term rentals are appropriate and where they're not. The idea that we're going to allow them everywhere without regulation is just really out of step with the values of the city. And I applaud the sponsors, and this is where the hard work is going to be and why we can't finish this in one night, because we're trying to, or they're trying, to accommodate situations, for example, in a two-unit or a three-unit building, where the owner is actually there and is able to supplement income and observe what's going on firsthand. It may not seem like a difference to you, but also realize that Newburyport is not in isolation. There are court cases on this. Two cases in Massachusetts right now. Two cases in Massachusetts right now are from 2017 down in Hull and 2018 in Linfield. In the first case, it was settled that Airbnb, VRBO, short-term rental, whatever you want to call it, is not a single-family use. It isn't. It's not a traditional residential use, nor is it an accessory use, because it's a business. In the second case, in Linfield, what happened in Linfield is they had a very bad incident where there was a perfectly innocent VRBO. He actually listed on Airbnb, HomeAway, Trips, Vacation Home Rentals, FlipKey, TripAdvisor, all of them. He ran into a guy named Mr. Victor, gave him all the rules, met with him, gave him the keys, said, "Hey, no more than five people." And of course, they had a big party. And you're right, none of the neighbors knew that he was doing all this stuff. But it just so happened, one of the guests was murdered. And so the town of Linfield woke up to this. And they never found the murderer, by the way. But they said, "All right, well, let's, maybe we should, maybe we should regulate this." So they did adopt a short-term rental ordinance so they could at least have some controls and so on. And the owner, Mr. Stillor, argued, "Well, I'm grandfathered, because I already was in." And the purpose, the purpose of my mentioning this case is, the court said, "No, you're not." So I think what people have to realize is these uses are actually not allowed currently. So shame on us for not passing regulation earlier. But the idea that we're going to do nothing, that doesn't make any sense. That doesn't help anybody. Because that means those of you that are operating are all operating illegally. You're in a gray area. We don't know whether you're fire compliant, et cetera, et cetera. We're trying to figure out a way to fairly keep those of you in business where we think it's an appropriate use and then plan ahead. It's not all-or-nothing thinking. Finally, I just want to, I got very detailed comments from board member Tainter. He suggested looking at an ordinance. He's writing in Portsmouth. That's well taken. But one thing I want to point out is there's another wrinkle in Massachusetts that they probably don't have in New Hampshire, and that is lodging house statutes. So you can't just look at the difference between hotels and residential uses in Massachusetts. Since World War I, there's a special body of law on a lodging house, which is a third type of animal. And that deals with fraternities, dormitories, people that are unrelated and sharing a house. So you really have got to get the city solicitor to help you reconcile that, too. So again, you know, this is very difficult work. It's going to take a lot of work, but we're not the only community wrestling with it. Somerville has the same issue. They have a way to regulate short-term rentals, lodging houses, hotels, and pick out which zones they're allowed in. So this just has to be done. We've kicked the can too long. We need to do this work.
Well said, councillor. Thank you very much. And that's a great lead-in to what I'm wrestling with. And having talked with a number of people about this and often, I can sit here and I can agree wholeheartedly with every single speaker as they go down the line. So it's interesting getting all the feedback. What I'd like to see happen on our side of it as we get into more contemplation and more understanding is I'd like to see a definition of exactly what it is we're trying to quote "fix." And I think that if we do focus on those points, we'll have a little bit of a more concise and clearer path. From my perspective, I'm, and also, first of all, just so you understand, there's two parts to this, right? There's the zoning that we're talking about. And then also, on the council side, there's licensing permitting. So we're doing two sets of rules. We're doing the rules for zoning. And then on the other side of it, we're doing the law as it relates to such things as are important to me, sanitation, whether or not it's, you know, fire code, things like that. So, and then also charges, you know, fees and so forth. So there's occupancy, et cetera, et cetera. So that happens on the city council side. So there's two parts of this going on simultaneously. But I'd like to see a clear definition of what it is we're trying to establish here. And I think that if we do that, not only will it be clearer for me and will we be able to find it in, but I think it'll be clearer for the whole process and for all of us. And that's just what I wanted to add to our board and perhaps even to the planning board. You know, if we can, if we can define these things, it might make it clearer to everybody which way we're going.
All right, so I am the one that's typically the briefest of us all. So I would like to thank everybody here tonight for coming out and giving us your thoughtful comments. We are listening. We did the same on Thursday night. And we will continue to do this. We will meet on April the 2nd, 6 o'clock, Planning and Development downstairs in the council chambers. And we will have this meeting again on April 15th, joined with the planning board. I can't say enough how I appreciate the fact that this is not an all-or-nothing. We are going to compromise. That's what we do. And it's going to take a lot of work. But we do appreciate all the input that you are giving us.